But what we want to do is to clarify, the United States and America. Things are really about what it for which it stands, one nation, a good God, and this all with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. So I have. A change I would like to make. So I'd like to move item nine B superintendent salary approval down to number twelve. After executive session. And then correspondingly you can move C, D, and E and new business to B, C, and D. And strike no business to follow on item eleven. So we'll take action on the superintendent salary after executive session. And then change number twelve adjournment to number thirteen. And yeah, leave it at thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes or less?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions on that or? Suggestions? Well, I will entertain a motion for the agenda as modified.
Motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Hi.
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 All right. Moving on to delegations, Mr. Peterson.
No formal delegations this evening, Mr. Skipper.
The proposed consent agenda, do we have any comments or questions here? No, they will also entertain a motion there as well. Oh, that moved to the full consent.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Bye. Moving on to public comments. Do you have any public comments to see me? If not, I'll save the trouble of reading my spiel here, any electronic? All right, go in once, go in twice. Move now to principal reports. Lisa.
What?
I'm good, thanks. I can see you out here. So we just have had a couple of updates because we were just here in August and so. So Erin and I just wanted to update everybody on a couple of things that are happening in the elementary school. So we've had some building changes and updates since we left in June. So we have had some painting done and several moves throughout the summer that Mr. Creo and his team helped us with, which has been great. If you get to come into the elementary school, they painted some classrooms, touched up the hallways, different things like that. We were able to move, I think it was nineteen different classrooms over the summer, which was a huge move for us, but. It was very necessary and they were able to get everything that we needed them to do done over the summer. So it was a great way for us to be able to start the school year. And then as we continue into this school year, we're going to use a color coded system. And we've started with cones and different things like that. So then families and students know what the changes are in relation to how we line up now. Where are the different lineup changes are? How will we doing our assemblies and then some different schoolwide activities that we'll have throughout this school year? So. We just wanted to let everybody know about that. And we have been doing our schoolwide expectations. So it was something that we started last year. And have carried into this school year. So we call it a like a basically it's a behavior red round robin. That our amazing parents help us with. They helped last year and then again they helped this year. So. We're working on finishing that this week and it actually will be done tomorrow. So they go into different areas throughout the school. So we've worked on the building expectations in different areas that we do school wide. And they help the classroom teachers and the students reteach those expectations. And so that's been really great for us to be able to do again this year. And we are going to start our character strong assemblies. And so this month we're working on respect and we will be doing those awards. At our October second assembly that we will have. So that will be our first character strong assembly. We are asking our teachers to notify parents via parent square this year, which will be new for us because. We're still getting used to parent square, but it's been an awesome way for us to be able to get in contact with all of our parents. And so. So they will be notifying parents who students will be receiving September awards for respect via parent square. And then moving forward, every month they will also be notifying parents. Whose students will be receiving the award for the month before. And so they're invited to those character strong assemblies that will be happening every month. And then. We also are working with Mr. Crego on just some things related to improving. Our transportation and our dismissal process. And so we'll continue to to work with that and with Mr. Peterson and everybody on just some updates that we can make. So. Does anybody have any questions?
So that last time I'm sure that pertaining to the the issue we've all heard about with that shouldn't be. Place on the wrong bus. But so. That's being worked on.
It is being worked on. You know, I I mean, it has to do with more than that also. We changed some things prior to the school year, starting in relation to how the kids enter the building. We don't enter through the back anymore. And so all of our students are lining up in the front. And so. That just changed some things in relation to dismissal also. And so as we came into this full year, we had already made some changes related to dismissal. And. So as we were coming into the school year, we needed to work on some updates anyways. And then, yes, we did have. That particular circumstance happened. And so, you know, we just need to make sure that we're all very cognizant of. Of how all of the kids are getting on the bus, what that process looks like and. Just makes us very aware of more things that we need to become cognizant of. And so as. Mrs. Cur and I are working with Mr. Crego and Mr. Peterson. We need to make sure that all of those processes that we're all a part of are. Are just very up to date and everybody knows about them and we're all aware of what that looks like. So we'll continue to talk about that and make sure that. Everybody in the building is aware of that and we have a very tight process for that moving forward. So. Partnering with teachers and our classified staff, they all are out there too and they're working together. And so we can many eyes. Make lighter work, right? And so we have fabulous people. And so just kind of getting us on the same page together. We feel confident that we've got the right people. We just have to put just us all right and that right back together.
Yeah, I know it's top priority. So we.
Yeah, absolutely.
Look forward to hearing back on. Any modifications or changes for that? Appreciate that.
Yeah, I would make just a note that. By the time that I went over to the elementary school to meet with Erin and Lisa. They had already crafted multiple.
Options.
Options for everyone to consider. So I didn't have to ask, that's for sure.
Does anybody else have any question?
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Davidson.
You, good evening, Board Chair Skipper, Board Members Brian and consultants and Warner. Superintendent Peterson, Director Rob. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I would also like to give a shout out to Reed and his maintenance and facilities team. My staff has been ranting and reading about how good their building looked when they came back. So. We definitely have the right people in the right places and a good team going here. For the middle school. One of being a new principal, if you gotta pick and choose what mountain you wanna climb first. And one, the first thing that we're working on as a staff is implementing and expanding our positive climate and culture within the school. Because we we really want all all kids in our middle school to feel connected to the school. So they have a sense of self worth. We want them to build powerful relationships with people in the building. So they feel like they belong. Excuse me. And we want to have them start envisioning their future so that they've got this sense of hopefulness about what they can become. So right now, we are also focusing on the character trait respect. And our goal is to really increase student positive recognition. And we're challenging every student to show respect in everything they do, both in the school and out in the community. We want to have a school full of Cubs ambassadors. Like they are representing not only themselves, but our community. And ultimately a reflection of their school. So we really want them to be ambassadors out there. And some of that's a new twist on things that they've done in the past. We're continuing the copy and awesome system. We're revamping the student of the month system. And we're hoping that that we're will really get students and staff excited to to hear and learn more about. In a visible way, all the positive things that our students are doing. We also have PLCs kicking off this week. So this will be the time of year where where PLCs get together, start setting goals for the year, student growth goals for the year. And ensuring that all students are actively participating in a rigorous. And challenging educational program. And September, we've got a few more weeks left. Is the suicide prevention and awareness month. So our ESP migrant student assistance professional is teaming with our school counselor. And the leadership class to promote positive mental health and expand the awareness of the national crisis hotline nine eight eight. And everything that they're doing, they're verifying with me. At the sounding board and and I'm helping them ensure that it fits with like a O S P and the department to help guide. So they're actually a great start. It's really nice to see the kids out there positively. We have school pictures and sports pictures this week on Thursday. And our middle school athletic contest begins September eighteenth and I've been dropping in a few practices here and there just to see the turnout. And there's a lot of kids out there participating. I think there's forty or so just alone in volleyball. So I remember when I was a middle school athlete and. You know, I'm older now, but you still have some memories of all the good times. So it's kind of cool to see these students building some of those memories. So I'm looking forward to watching their game start next. Next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? Questions?
Well, so how's it going with the renewed emphasis on the phone policy? Are you finding perfect buy-in from the teachers and staff? And then how's the compliance look stars?
The cell phone policy as in our handbook and as the. Got more direction is off and in the backpack all day. And so far at the middle school. Teachers are very excited that there is uniform enforcement. And the students really have not had any pushback at all. It's early. We will see how it goes. You know, cell phones are a very attractive item. But. I met with my staff. A few days before school and we got on the same page. And right now, things are going very well. But it's definitely not something that you teach once and say, we got it. Sure, we'll we'll keep addressing it and make sure that we troubleshoot issues that might pop up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First way.
So nine days school, anyway, it's still going. And so. What's really great is we've had a lot of kids out for sports and a lot of good. Numbers of people coming and watching the games. If you're at the volleyball match last week, it was the loudest in the gym that it's been in a long time. Really great support from the kids. We're talking with the leaders of that to make sure that's being handed down so that if they're not there, then it keeps going. It's a forever thing. It's not just because we have a couple of kids who are really excited about it. Football, we had a great turnout on Friday. Tons of people out, a lot of people, you know, I mean Royals won maybe four or five state championships, right? But our people are still showing up. They're supporting the kids. They're not negative. They're positive. It's that there's growth that's going to happen and that is happening. And so, you know, we just happened to get to play Royal first. And then we get to play Casper second. And then the season will start getting probably a little bit more level out and stuff like that. So then the kids are really excited. Everybody's really excited about the program. Volleyball played really well the other night. They just lost in three, but soccer's been playing hard. They lost one oh match. So athletically, things are going well. We're trying to keep that going. We had a great pep assembly last Friday. A lot of action, a lot of movement, a lot of good things going in the back to class. We've changed our. Assemblies. We used to put them like next to. Lunch or next to the end of the school day. And then for some strange reason, kids thought they could just go lunch or just get out on school day. So now we're putting them in between periods. So between. Third and fourth and between fourth and fifth. So the kid still has to go back to class. So we get done, boom, you go right back to class and and get going. So we're doing in the afternoon, morning. Last week was in the morning. Next week, because we have homecoming, it'll be in the afternoon. That way it levels out on each side on losing ten minutes. Kids normally, first half of the day will be regular schedule, second half. So it just depends. So it's that's been really good. One of the things that we're doing. That was implemented this year with I T is land school. And if you don't know what land school is, it allows the teachers to see the the computer screen. Everybody in the class, there's some burps in that, but the whole idea is being able to make sure the kids are on the right site. During the class all the time, teacher can go in and shut off their screen or I don't know, like you think you should be on this page. Okay, and and the kids can that so. Once that gets fully implemented and going, I think it'll be a great thing for the kids. Suicide awareness month was already mentioned. And so we have a little positive code every day. In our announcements that I get to deliver. Other than that, it's a great nine days. You know, every day is a challenge and a new day. And that's just kind of the life of the principal. So any questions?
Same question. How's it going with the?
So you were there.
I know, but.
And so.
Not a great hero.
Yes, it was kind of nice because I just kind of pulled along with me. And there's a few kids who, you know. And I tell every parent who comes in, everybody thinks this is the like lungs and the body part, you know? And it's the best thing, worst thing we've ever had. But in the high school, and I've seen that Richardson's doing the same thing. They're doing the same thing we're doing where they can use it before school at lunch between classes and kids got have to make sure they put them away. So I'm out the hallways, kid has it out, I get to take it, but unhappy with me. But that's what it is. The the teachers are trying the best they can to 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 keep the line and it's going. Okay, we've had. Well, you were there, we had many phones taken in, but it wears off and you just gotta keep. Beating the the drum to keep the phones put away and so forth. I say they should have a zero tolerance as a teacher in the classroom. We've already warned him, already warned him at the first assembly, you know, so I just take it from over the hallway, you know, you also got to be able to experience life skills classroom. When we had a situation that we had to take care of and that's just part of the day in the life, I think. But that's why I love the job, nobody's the same as any other one, all one hundred eighty or totally different. So. Any other questions?
Thank you.
For thank you.
All right, moving on to unfinished business salary schedules, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Skipper. And I want to thank the board as a whole for putting up with my. My being flustered the other day. And so we've created a. A document that's a little easier, oh, mainly for me. So the numbers haven't changed at all, but what we did is divided between our classified and certificated. Staff. So you see on the first page. The exempt and classified. Folks and directors and their salary increase. Proposal. And then you see on the much smaller second page, you see the certified directors. And superintendent salary proposals, even though you're going to vote on. Mine at a different time. So this was included in here for information purposes only, but. Short of mine, you're you're being asked to take action to approve these. These. Salary schedules for all of the other employees in the exempt and classified director and certificate director positions.
Can you come answer your questions? I don't have to say every time that I'll entertain a motion. I will.
But you should.
Will entertain a motion. It's always good. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
All right, Mr. Peterson, policy thirty one twelve, social emotional climate, second reading.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Skipper. So this is. Once again, a policy that's coming to us as a result of. Thirty two forty one, our discipline policy getting updated. And making reference to this, I think it is very impressive. That while the board is considering putting in a a plan. And a and goals to nurture a positive school environment, the school climate that we've got. Three principals, three buildings who are taking the bow by the horns and going for that from day one. So. Kudos to them and the timing was perfect. So. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this and simply reinforcing our. Our plan that there. Are just multiple ways to address school climate. And I think that our principals are doing a fine job of getting the word out. So this would be the second reading prior to a third reading. At the next meeting where we would ask for an approval.
Any comments or questions at this point? But now we'll move on to new business. Item nine A K B S A contract, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, and we apologize for the. For the shorter notice, we did, we just noticed this afternoon that the K B S A. Full contract did not even get included in the full board packet you receive Friday. It was sent up. Layer this afternoon. And to be honest, there simply isn't a lot of changes to note other than the salary adjustment. And the K B S A, we. I've got to say, we spent a solid ninety minutes negotiating this contract. But the. The secretaries ended with in agreement with the district at four point seven percent increase. For this current school year and then a three point one percent increase. For next year or I P D, whichever is higher. We did a little bit of language cleanup. But there was, there quite frankly, wasn't a lot to do added Juneteenth in. From an L O A we had earlier, but everything, everything turned out good, like I said, ninety minutes. So I would just. Answer any questions and and ask the board to go ahead and approve our new K B S A contract.
Any comments or questions? I want to entertain a motion for the K B S A contract.
I'm looking to approve the K B S A contract.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
All right, twenty four, twenty five, Carl Lee Perkins grant assurances, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, one more time. What we're looking at here. As you know, Carl Perkins grand is the primary funding mechanism. That we utilize to. Get funding for our C T programs. I know that it is the goal of not only Keely Gann as our our C T small school director, but mine as well as. And I know Heidi and several of our other staff have. Have experienced it, but getting me as a chance to go in and look at what Bruce has. Has started at the middle school with the career connections class. It's outstanding. So this is simply the the funding mechanism for that. Perkins assurance goes into the state as a guarantee that we're going to follow certain stipulations. And as you can see, this is virtually verbatim of of the grant process that we've utilized the seven years that I've been here. So. Would offer to ask any or offer to answer any questions and then. Ask for the board's approval so we can keep moving forward.
I'm certainly very excited by the progress we've made on C T and we popped in one of the classrooms there. We didn't quite think. We didn't want to distract all the students in there. I started to dig through all those kits, but. From everything that I was hearing from Mr. Davis, the students are thrilled to have those. It's really. Open new opportunities, exciting a lot of students, so. Very much supportive of our C T efforts. Any other comments or questions on the grant assurances?
Okay. I put motion to approve this one for the present grant.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Bye. Thank you. All right, audit results, Mr. Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Skipper. As the board knows, this audit took a little longer than the last couple of years. Normally, you come to you about June or July with this update. There's a couple of reasons that it is later. One reason they started the audit a whole month later than they did last couple of years. And then it really came down to, there were some things that there's a lot of conversation back and forth then. On how we do things procedurally and that how they perceived it through O S P I. So there was a lot of back and forth and so it kind of took a little longer than before. All things considered, I think the audit came out well for the district. And we're happy to report that with the financial piece, there were no issues. We got the best opinion we could receive. There will be a couple of policies that we'll need to bring back to you guys. Just simply that they've been updated. Their understanding of different government laws have come out. And it was different than a lot of districts have interpreted. So one being like the lease capitalization threshold that we brought you guys of our leases. It started out as a percentage and then they asked us for a dollar amount. And now they don't like the dollar amounts. They want something lower. It's something that all districts across the state are being asked to look at again. So we'll be coming back with those. One item that we do want to discuss is that we did receive a finding in regards to the Bell's calendar grant. In the grant requirements, there were no time and effort reporting requirements. But. When they looked at our costs that we had incurred. They had said that we needed support for this. Which in our case would have been the time and effort. So in our eyes, we followed everything as we should have. And theirs, we didn't. So they had issued a finding. So our next steps are to work with O S P I and see if there's any repercussions. In our initial conversations, there is nothing to worry about. Nothing's gonna happen. It's more just a discussion on how to. One other thing is just to let you know with the audit going longer, the original estimated cost of the audit was thirty thousand dollars. It came in at thirty six thousand, so it was a little higher because of the added time spent. Are there any questions?
Well, I, as you know, I attended the audit exit interview, so this is more for just the. To broadcast it, you know, there. But so thank you for all your work into Mona as well. I know. I've been on both sides about it. So I know it's a. Not the most exciting part of your job, I'm sure. But yeah, I. Definitely happy to see that we got unqualified. Definitely the happy to see that we got an unqualified opinion, which, you know, that word. Uh, sounds bad, that's good, thank you, so qualified. So um, beyond that, you have the one finding. Uh, it sounds like you mentioned with the initial conversation you've had with the OSPI, they were. Essentially supportive of what you'd already done and said there's. Nothing here, but um, but the auditors felt strongly that they still needed to report it as a finding. So we're just going to circle back with OSPI and say, now that this is officially a finding, can you confirm that? Uh, there's no repercussions here and we did everything right, I'll be the end of that. But. Other than that, yeah, can we get that report on our website? Public but wanna check that out. Are free to do so.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions on the audit?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Now the fun part, uh, Mr. Peterson, self in discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, is. You know, this is an opportunity, um. We. As a district, um. And that basically announced, uh, not necessarily even a change in our policy, but I think the proper terminology would be. A full enforcement of our policy across the board, um, with our community. Um. And we've heard from our principals tonight, and and really I wanted to bring to the board the opportunity to have any. Further discussions or ask our principals any pointed questions that you wanna see. Um, we have had some. Opportunities. To potentially purchase some products that might aid us in this. Um, in the form of um, a company called Yonder, which. Operates uh, under the premise that when a student comes into the school, they are issued a nylon bag. That uh, then clicks and locks shut that they keep on their person uh, for the balance of the day. That locking mechanism, for those of you who don't know, you've all bought clothes. Uh, that have to go through those, the you take the plastic thing and they stick it in, well, that's a magnet they stick it in, and it releases it. And allows you to purchase and take it on out, it's the same concept with these yonder bags, is it? This lock will only be open with a with a magnetic release. Um, so I know that we had initially made some plans to move down the road to make that purchase. Um, however, uh, the district decided to go ahead and give Bruce and and, excuse me, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Henry. Uh, the opportunity to try and enforce our current policy and practices without. Uh, expending any capital to to purchase these, so. I think the real opportunity here is to discuss amongst yourselves as board members, you what you see going well, what you. Are looking for if it, if we want to keep tabs on this particular topic, which I think we do. Um, as we notice around the the region, there are some schools who have gone so far. As to purchase the younger products. In fact, there was an article that came out today from another school district. About forty seven miles uh, east of Pasco that has implemented these at both of their middle schools. Um. They're they're not inexpensive by any stretch, and so I think that's always a consideration to take into account. Um, I do believe that um, either one of our options, either the one that we're currently going with, with solid one hundred percent compliance. And enforcement, I think, is a way we can continue to go at this point. I would say that in support of principals and and quite frankly, the positive responses that we've seen from our community. That if it comes right down to it, that we would probably go ahead and I would recommend taking that next step. Uh, if we find that we're we're fighting a a losing battle. Um, I do not want to get Mr. Davidson or Mr. Henry into a position where they're. You know, sitting on the deck of the Titanic with a bucket, um, and the ship's going down, so. Um, I think right now where we are, if I've if I've heard them correctly in in my conversations with them, that as of right now today. September ninth, we're okay, but as Clay said, we're in the. Nice day. So. Uh, there's always, there's always more to be done, but I feel like, uh, at least from. The first shot across the bow, we're doing okay. Um, but I would welcome any feedback from the board. Um, in regards to either uh, either of our buildings where this is happening primarily and and. Where we go from here, quite frankly.
And this has been an ongoing conversation for months now, perhaps longer, and I know we had a workshop back in March or April, I can't remember specifically when that was, where we. Kind of floated this idea of really hammering down on this policy, and the evidence is out there that. Phones are just toxic for our students, not only for their learning capabilities and class, they're a distraction, but. For the rising mental health epidemic that we have right now, increases in anxiety, depression, suicide, suicide awareness month like. Um, a lot of this is driven by social media and. That is just nurtured in. In social media where we have these uh. Problems with bullying and other items and. I I I couldn't say strongly enough how much I think we should just. Get rid of the phones entirely, so, uh, but I appreciate the time and conversation I was able to have with Mr. Davidson, uh, Mr. Henry. And I. Witnessed for Sam, some of the work that Clay is doing there, I think when I got there, he was had a student in his office, and he was dealing with a. Situation and then a couple more popped up while I was there, including a parent calling about. Phone, so um, I don't want. Our teachers and our staff and our administrators to uh, spend their entire time. Leasing phones, uh, but it certainly is a trade off, even if we go with pouches and. That has a cost, has some benefits as well. Uh, one of the things that I think I feel strongly about is, of course, we wanna have cell phones out of the classroom. Not be in a distraction in the classroom because they need to focus on their work. But specifically at the high school, if they're allowed to be on their phones between periods and at lunch. I, they're gonna have fifty minutes of pent up, I didn't have access to my phone frustration that they need to then. Then, so I I will say that, you know, when Clay and I were. Standing there between classrooms or between uh, periods. Number of students that pass on their phones. Far exceeded the number that we're not. So I. I think we want our students interacting with each other, having real conversations, not checking. Not checking sports scores or the latest in social media or the latest rumors or anything along those lines. We want them learning how to interact and have real relationships with their peers. So um, I still feel that the pouches is the right way to go in the long term. I'm fully supportive if we wanna keep doing this, and I press. Our our teachers and our administrators and staff to report to us if they think it's working. So I look forward to hearing the feedback on that, and if it is working, great, uh, certainly don't wanna spend money. On pouches anymore than I want to dig a hole in the ground and throw the money in there, but um, if there's. Proper trade off of that, I would certainly support it. And. If uh, it's something that will make our students academic success and their emotional and social well being. That could be some of the best money that we've ever spent, so. Open to any other thoughts unless you want. Skipper in my opinion.
Well, I probably have something to say. I just felt like I hadn't seen, and I'm not in your guys' buildings, obviously, or yours, Lisa, do you have any?
Um. I was not in in the last nine days, really, but uh, but we have in the past. We we did have a group of kids. Definitely last year, um, that, I know, now we did have. Some difficulty with, and so so we did start to reinforce our policy last year and. Really like the policy that we have is that when the kids come to school. And uh, when they enter the building, they do have to go in their backpacks. Um, I mean, it is a little bit different when you're in elementary school as opposed to when you're in middle school and high school, but the only real difference that we have is that. Our students get. Two options, like to number two, right, so once you've. You've been given your first warning, once you get to your second warning, then that's when they've been taken away and we're calling our, like their parents. Um, and so then they are, they're brought to the office and their parents have to come to the front.
I've only taken one away this year, and it was a smart watch, yeah. But you can do the same sort of thing.
Right, right, right.
So. Yeah, yeah, I get it. But but it is a problem, and there's some bullying that happens, or like they'll record, and they'll take it out at recess, and they'll like record fighting to be cool, or things like that. Or they'll also get in the bathroom. And that, again, I mean, that was, that's the issue that we had last year, right, so, and so we really. To negate all of that. Were really needing to be firm on everything, not that we wouldn't do that, because we will continue to do that.
Reasoning for not doing it at this time is, I just wanted to see what could be done, I didn't feel, like I heard from a lot of kids that said. Nobody told us anything. And for all, I don't know, maybe this kid talked, I know my boy, and it's been. A year or two since they were here. They didn't have theirs taken away, neither one of my, my one, but. That's what happened, and I just hadn't. I I hadn't heard. The issue, I know there are issues in the classroom, I don't want them in the classrooms any more than the next person does. But I think if you're gonna babysit a phone. You're gonna babysit a phone in a bed. And that's just, I didn't see the point of spending the money until we knew if our kids were. Smart enough to phone without being over the. Sorry, so that was just, I just wanna see how it goes, and and I hate to make you guys babysitters, you're not, that's not what we signed up for, and I'm sorry. But. I just. I just felt like we needed to at least attempt to do something, be a little more diligent. Be more making this purchase, because it's not an inexpensive purchase. So that was, that's where I was coming from as a board member. And I just, if it, if it doesn't work, then we can certainly, if the bags are, you think are gonna be the answer. Then. I gave it a shot and we'll see how it goes, but. Sound like, maybe it's going okay.
My big thing is, you know. I was sat for you, I would say. Every school, and we're gonna like, ever again, so they have to go back in, they have to keep, you know, because it's really. Making sure they're following through with expectation, I said. You know, I can't force a teacher not to give a kid a chance. I'm not there.
Right.
You know, so I encourage them not to, because when I see them, I always just take it like, hey, bummer man. They already told you, can't have them out, you know, and so, um.
And what is our passing time, do they really need to get them out of a bag in two and a half minutes or whatever?
It's five minutes. Yeah, and so the other, I mean. I I understand that side of it. But I mean, like, it's the worst thing, the best thing, and everybody knows, when it vibrates under your butt, you have this. Instantaneous, like you have to, so for them to, like you said, hold off for fifty seven minutes, and then that's their five minutes that they can look at it. You know, it's a give and take thing, they but making sure they know. There's a zero tolerance on. The hell in class, like I told my teachers, their job is to teach, the student's job is to learn, we have to take away. The uh, disruption.
Right.
But that seems to be the key, so.
And I think to take right, take away the instruction time, because you're taking away the disruption, but. Again, there's gotta be, we gotta figure that out.
But a lot of schools do the, but a lot, I mean, Richardson came out and said, there. And Pascal does the same thing, so now there's this big discussion on, the middle schools don't have it, the high schools do. But we also have on the campus, the middle school doesn't, there's also, I mean, there's a lot of things you get as you get older.
Of course.
You know, and so how we look at that, deal with that. You know, and I think trying to get kids to understand, like, we're, we talk a lot about work, uh, school work. So if you're in a job, there's not very many jobs that you can just take the phone up or your boss, like, hey, just wait one second. You know, can't do it, unless I'm having a baby and. You already informed them. So a lot of that is really more often communication stuff. You know, but. Nine days. We can't settle on nine days, the next time we come in. Yes, so we come back in November, that's a good time, a good place to say, where are we now, in my day. We got two good months in. And I mean, we can just pull the data on how many cell phones. You know, our role in high school is the first day they technically gotta take it away, rest of the day, the kid gets back, at the end of the day, like all the parents, I don't know that. At that point, I'm the parent, let's pick it up.
So what's? Do, can we, I don't, obviously, I don't, in a child's day, can we have that on, how many repeat offenders we have?
I'm sure.
I mean, I mean, is it?
Yeah, I'm sure we did.
Or little Johnny, you'll always, I know.
I know that, I can tell you just. Anecdotally, that it's about ninety percent that they get it one time, I don't get it a second time. It's the five or ten percent that there's multiple inside. You know, and so, uh, but that doesn't mean. They didn't have it out at some point, it's just they get hot, you know what I mean, so, like, well, there's a, well, there's a way, I mean. That's just what it's been in high schools forever. So.
And like you say, it's more work, I just feel like, we, these kids need to be learning the normal.
And that's exactly what we. And one of the kids that I did talk to. Last week was a student who's going to become assistant general manager of students who turns eighteen this month. I said, what would you do with somebody with a cell phone out during work that you didn't get permission to? Okay, I get it. But it it has to get. At a point where they get it. You know, because we can say a lot of rules to them, it's like. But then also it's. Okay, I got it.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I, I would just like to see how, if we can do it without sending.
So I'll pull a. Data thing for November and come up and let you guys know how we've had it. You know, because everyone will go in.
I would say that, um, Mr. Henry brought up a point, came to him from his staff. Uh, regarding or policy on the topic. And, um, I think after seven years, you realize I'm. I like board policy that is. Really broad. Because it allows for different interpretation, but also means you don't have to change every three. Or four years unless somebody tells us to, um, so when we're looking at policy thirty two forty five students and telecommunications devices, you can tell how well the policy is. Because it still refers to pagers, beepers. Yeah, it could be, this was in two thousand seventeen, however, what it does say that does. It it meets what Mr. Henry and his staff were looking for. Students will comply with any additional rules developed by the school concerning the use of telecommunications or other devices. So in that sense, Mr. Henry, you've got free rein, whatever the school decides to put in place, the board will support. I mean, I think you've heard that here tonight, then. That I think it's not only a matter of. Perhaps. Uniformity in enforcement at the, at the secondary schools. But the understanding that from a board standpoint, I think you've got a very uniform. Um, opinion. That we're gonna, we're gonna end this, and it shouldn't take. Really specific board policy. Please, please relate to your staff that. They have the full support of the board to do whatever is needed to get those out. So. And the other thing, and I'm just gonna throw this in. I honestly believe. If left to the devices of the middle school students and the high school students. This probably isn't as big a deal as some of us as adults. Are probably making it, I don't know that. Uh, Mr. Davidson has probably had any of his middle school kids coming and. Telling him how bad their lives are since, uh, they've been asked to put phones away. Think, uh, I think most of them understand. And I think it has taken a while, but I think they really, the kids do understand it is for their own good. So. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so I'll be interested in seeing some of that. Data you can bring back in November for applies, one thing that I think will be difficult to measure is, as I mentioned, if. Everyone's on their phone during class and periods and on their phone during lunch. Are they developing meaningful relationships, do they feel like they belong at school, do they feel? Lonely at school, or that's something that outside of survey results that I don't know that people have.
Because middle school, you know, very passive.
And then, yeah, to echo what you were saying, Mr. Peterson, and. Um, certainly understand there's a contingent of parents that feel that. This is perhaps an intrusion, or at least they're worried that, well, what if there's an emergency? Um, I guess based on the existing policies that we have for. The middle school and then also for the high school, if their phone's gonna be off or at least put away on silent presumably in their backpack. They're not gonna be checking if we're up to fifty seven minutes or so anyway, so. Um, if the best way to reach them will not be to text them or call them, and hope that they're seeing it. It will be to call the office and get ahold of an adult who can then go contact them. Now granted, what if there's an emergency? Now granted, what if there's an emergency that occurs at the school and there's something tragic, like we all are aware of that in the back of our minds? Uh, my thoughts on that are that the last thing we need are three hundred students all panicking on the phones, calling each other, calling their parents, and suddenly we have three hundred vehicles showing up to a scene where we need emergency or, um, first responders. So they, what they need to do in that case of emergency is to listen to the adults who are charged with their care and their safety. So I understand that that can be a little scary or uh, not knowing, uh, what's going on with your, your child, but having a cell phone on their person at all times in order to make you feel a little better. Sorry is not gonna be the, uh, in the best interest of their long-term development, both emotionally, socially, and also actively. With that, I have no opinions. Anything else?
No, that's all I've got.
You covered it, though.
Yeah, I tried to. All right, um, I think that, let's listen to more comments. Well, I've been talking to someone, keep going. Uh, so, uh, first off, thank you to Mr. Henry, Mr. Davidson for allowing me to visit last week and also to all the staff there as well for allowing me to visit. And I specifically do want to, as you mentioned, acknowledge the life skills team. Uh, they're doing some incredible work there and, uh, really proud of that. It's it's, it's very tough job. So really, really appreciative of their, their efforts in particular. So uh, want, definitely want to acknowledge that, but thank you for all the staff for allowing that visit. It's really fun to see what's going on with the students and seeing, uh, Bruce learning so many of the names already, uh, picking those up pretty quickly. And, uh, uh, also was able to able to, uh, I attended that audit exit interview, as I mentioned, so appreciate it again, all the work that our team uh, put into that effort. And, um, also, uh, attended first part of the football game, so, uh, was really really glad to see the level of effort and support of the fans and parents there, uh, for, for what was obviously a tough match, but uh, that was great to see and I'm really optimistic for the work that Coach Fleming is doing for that team. I think we have some bright future ahead and not just for wins and losses, but really just the intangibles that you get from playing sports and I don't have to write them all, write them all off, but you know, listening to instruction, learning to show up on time, the importance of practice, teamwork, artwork, um, all those things. So I'm really, uh, really excited for that, and not just for the football team, but for all, all of our student athletes. It's a really important part of the experience that we offer here in this village. I think I saw you at the game, right?
I, yeah, I thought you missed the second half of the game where they shut him down. That was the important part.
All right, uh, well, with that, we will move into executive session pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten, section one G performance of a public employee not to exceed thirty minutes. Uh, we will be taking action after that, so we will excuse ourselves and be back in less than thirty minutes or less, I will say. But, uh, don't feel like you have to stay here. Thank you all.
Yep. Yep. Good.